This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council meeting of December 7th, 2020. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Hess?
Councilwoman Hess here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell here.
Councilman Noack?
Councilman Noack here.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor is here. Thank you, and we'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Um, approval of the, um, approval of the agenda for this evening, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, I move we approve the agenda.
Councilman Mitchell, support.
That was Mitchell.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noack?
Councilman Noack, yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening? Suggested, no? Okay, approval of the minutes for regular session of November 16th, 2020, uh, any issues or changes to that? Okay, we'll move on to citizens appearing before council on agenda, non agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting this evening that you're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so, I believe there were directions in the packet. I will first ask IT if he had had any indications of public comment.
Um, I show nothing in the chat window and I did briefly unmute the callers to make sure if they wanted to say something, they could, uh, they couldn't do so.
All right, thank you. Um, anyone on the, in the virtual world like to address council this evening?
I would.
And state your name and, and address for us, please.
I'm Kent Davis and I'm with WBKB. I just wanted to, uh, know if I could speak to a council member or ma- uh, Mayor Walagora after the meeting, just to get a comment on some of the proceedings and clarify some points for tonight's news.
Um, absolutely. I am reply to your email request as well and I will have your number, I'll give you a call afterwards.
All right, thanks. Just want to be doubly sure.
All right, thanks Kent. Uh, anyone else? Okay, we will proceed. Tonight's consent agenda, um, A bills to be allowed in the amount of $168,719.37. B is a 2021 council meeting schedule. C is the approval of Memorial Day, Fourth of July and Christmas parades held within the city limits in 2021. D is a collection of 2021 property taxes for Alpena Public Schools. E is amended CPS 21 guidelines for property exemption. F is sort of vending contract renewal. G is council appointment of Kathleen Melville Hall to the Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring on December 1st, 2023. And H is the Alpena County Designated Assistant.
Councilman Noack, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, second.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noack?
Councilman Noack, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, yes.
And Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. And those, um, I guess just to clarify those items on there will be posted up on our website. Very new feature. We'll move down to 13 as unfinished business. A is the farmer's market lease of Michigan warming shelter. Rich Solinger is prepared for that.
Yeah. Good evening, council. Um, this is Rich Solinger, city engineer. In the packet tonight was a draft agreement between the city of Alpena and the Alpena Farmers Market. After the last meeting, I know there was some direction from city council to, uh, shift the, the responsibility for, management of any lease, uh, or rentals of the warming shelter, over to city council in lieu of the farmers market group. I did get some input from the various, uh, council members and, and farmers market group and felt it was prudent that we represent this agreement. And again, this agreement is geared towards the farmers market group managing the rentals of the, Michigan warming shelter as well as all responsibilities for cleaning, uh, daily maintenance, et cetera. Just wanted to present this as an option if council, uh, so decides to proceed down this road. Uh, any, any comments they generate could be modified in this agreement. If council elects to go with a city managed rental agreement, we can remod- or we can modify this and have it back at the next council meeting.
Okay, um, thank you, Rich. I had, uh, I had some time to, to read over, I think everyone did, uh, the proposed, uh, contract. I emailed some of my, um, concerns back to you. Probably my, probably my biggest concern, uh, is that, um, after the Performance Locker left, um, and that was quite a significant difference, uh, in what they, what they did, uh, as a, for-profit business that they, and they were in there basically exclusively. So, so there really isn't too much comparison between that and what farmers market would like to do. And I just don't, I just, and it's not necessarily the farmers market. I've kind of, removed them, uh, from, specifically from the contract and just kind of, kind of read it over and, and my thoughts would be the same regardless of whether it was the farmers market or any other group. I'm just not really comfortable with the fact that it's a, it's a, it, it kind of reverted back to a city, a city park and a city building, uh, after the Performance Locker left. And I, I would, I would like to see the city, um, go revert back to what it was prior to, um, the Performance Locker being in there, that we basically rented it out, uh, as we would any other public facility. So I would like to just see that all of that control and organization shifted back to the city rather than on a, on a specific renter. As I stated, regardless of whether it's the farmers market or anybody else, I just feel that, they're a renter of a, of a public facility for a couple of days a week. And we're, I, I think it's, um, I just don't think it's in the public's best, best interest for them to completely control the, the facility and the surrounding grounds as much as what's stated in the, in the, um, in the contract. So that's, that's my, um, major issue with the contract. And then, um, I did have a couple of other items in my, in my email that in the event that, that council would like to continue to go, you know, that the majority would like to go in this direction and approve this, this contract, that I, I had some, um, some other issues that I would like addressed. Um, and I sent those to everyone. I don't, I don't have it in front of me, but it basically had to do with, um, keys, keys and, um, and who, who would be able to, would be able to rent, um, the facility because it specifically states in here that, other renters other than the farmers market would have to, um, would have to, be, um, it's right here, enhance the primary goals of the farmers market. So that really doesn't include someone wanting to, uh, have a graduation party or a baby shower or whatever else anybody might be interested in, in, um, utilizing the facility. So, um, those were my concerns that I shared. I guess we can kind of go around the table. So, so Rich, as he continues to negotiate with, farmers market can have a clear direction on where the council wants to go. So, um, I'll leave that, those comments, and then move to Mayor Pro Tem Johnson for her input.
Um, thank you. Just, just so I'm clear, mayor, do, do you want the farmers market to have a lease or do you just want them to rent the building on the days that they need it?
Um, I think, um, for starters, I, I think it's absolutely fantastic that they're in there. Um, I'll, I'll say that just to begin with it. Um, I think it's a great, uh, winter and summer. It seems to have been working out for them. I would, whether we call it a lease or, an established, uh, regular, regularly occurring rental, really doesn't, I, I'm not really sure whether, whether, what the difference is there. Um, I'd like them to continue to utilize the facility on, on Saturdays and Wednesdays, for as long as they would like to. But, uh, and whether that's, you know, how that's set up and as to whether they're, I would just like to see a, a fair, fair rental agreement with them, um, be maybe a little bit different than a, than a, an individual party wanting to take place. You know, as far as their responsibilities, I, I don't have an issue with their request to, to have a storage, a permanent storage, um, locker there to put their stuff so they don't have to haul it out every time. I don't have an issue with stuff like that in the office if no one else is using the office, um, things of that nature. I just, I, I think every, everything else about the contract, um, should be, should really be looked at. I, I just, as far as renting it to anyone else and, and, um, things of that nature, I think should fall in back to staff.
Okay, thank you for clarification. Um, and, and I, and I kind of am in the middle on this. I, I understand what the mayor says and I would be good if, if they were comfortable with just renting it, um, on the days that they needed. I did, in this particular agreement, ask for them to amend input, um, that they had use of the surrounding areas, for what they presently do so that, you know, they didn't go outside of, say, Wednesday and Saturday using the outside area that, that they normally use now, so that it does remain open to the public. But, but, but maybe the city and the farmers market have to go back to the table and see exactly, what, what they see. What, where do they see this going? Would they be comfortable just, you know, renting it on those two days knowing that for the next year, two, three, whatever, that, um, they had it? And, um, the rest of it revert back to the city or is there a common ground somewhere? And I have to agree. I think it's fantastic that they're in that building. So, you know, uh, I guess that's where I'm at. I think that maybe we need a little bit more work on this. And, and I'm going to leave it there.
Okay, uh, thank you Cindy, and then we'll move to, uh, Mr. Noack.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I kind of echo what the mayor was bringing up earlier too. It's like, when I was reading this over, the, the things that I believe is they are leasing for a certain time period, uh, the warming shelter and they want to, you know, lease, uh, a place to store some, some tables and such, and I'm comfortable with that. But I agree with the mayor in the fact that other rentals coming into that particular facility should be, uh, leased out by us. Uh, and by us, I mean the city. And I don't have a problem with a, you know, a, a different lease that shows that they're going to be outside in the summers in a certain area or inside in, uh, the winter months on a certain day from a certain time. And that they want to use part of the building to store their things. I think the, the lease can be easily, uh, joined that. I think it's fantastic that we have a place for them and they're able to expand their winter market. Uh, but as far as other rentals or controlling, uh, you know, the rentals and, uh, that, I think that should be best leave to city staff and, and let us just kind of, uh, handle it from there. So, um, that's kind of where I'm at with this. I think that would be better for the, the overall community. Uh, it really does take a lot of the, the responsibility in such, off of the farmers market, uh, beyond what they're using it for and puts it back on us.
Okay, uh, thank you, sir. Um, and next would be, um, Amber Hess, I believe.
Hi. Yes, I, again, I'll, I'll, I think it's great that the farmers market is using the space and, and I'm grateful for that, that they found the space to use. I, originally looking at this, I was thinking I wouldn't, I'd be open to the farmers market basically being the, the steward of the rentals if it was entirely open to the community, if there was no picking and choosing. But it seems that, um, you know, having to go back to the city, this might be more clear rather than trying to have that, put the responsibility on them. You know, our offices have hours and standard operating times where, you know, they are a, a volunteer, non-profit organization. And maybe they aren't going to be accessible as much as our city offices would be to someone that wants to bring it out for an event or, or something. So it may make sense just to, for, to establish with them when they plan to be there, and go forward with that and then, um, and finding a cost that works hopefully with them, without extra rental income in any way, and, um, moving forward from that. So, that's all I have.
Right, thank you, Amber. And, uh, Danny Mitchell?
Yes, I, uh, semantics possibly, but, uh, uh, the, the term lease versus rental. Obviously the lease for the farmers market would be something that identifies the, the Wednesdays and the Saturdays as theirs alone for the period of, of time that they set aside for the farmers market itself. Otherwise the rentals, uh, could be at any time, any day, kind of thing like this. I don't mind the idea of them, um, managing the rental spaces otherwise, but I would go along with the consensus of the board in this situation. But mostly I want to make sure that we have a, a good lease for the farmers market, uh, so that they know that the Wednesdays and Sun- uh, Saturdays are theirs in that building or around that building. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you Danny. And, um, Rich, I, I think it seems, seems that we're, we're kind of all going in the same direction. Certainly, uh, certainly I, I don't hear any opposition to locking, locking those specific times and days in for, period of time, uh, whether it be, you know, throughout the winter and then not in the summer or just storage in the summer. Or if they want to continue using the indoors during the summer, um, you know, that's something that you can work out with them. I want to make sure, I guess, um, in my opinion, I, I want to make sure that our, that our cost to them is realistic based on, you know, based on the hours that, that they'll be in there, not, not like an entire days. If we were to charge somebody else, you know, for an entire Sunday or an entire Wednesday, it would be different for the farmers market, obviously, because they're going to be in there only for, for the, the mornings and very early afternoon. So if we can work something out, um, because if, if part of the negotiation with the cost that they were going to pay monthly, uh, hinged on, on them having revenue from leasing, subleasing it out to, to other organizations or parties, then, you know, I want to, I want to make sure that that's, that's covered. I, I wouldn't want to say, hey, you can't, you can't sublease this out anymore, you know, to, to kind of, to make up for what, you know, your lease is and then, and not lower it. So, um, so if that sounds realistic to you and, um, not sure if, uh, no, I'm not really sure if, um, someone from the farmers market is on the call, but, or on the virtual, but, um, if that's a direction that you're comfortable with what our, what our thoughts are.
Yeah, I, I, uh, kept track of what, uh, all the council members have given us direction to do. I will work on rewriting it, get with the farmers market group. And, um, Rachel and I have had some discussions on this as far as, uh, an appropriate rental fee. There will be something less than the $700 stated in here. So we will work on, on getting that. And at least, um, I say get it back to you. We'll at least have a draft back to you by next council meeting, unless something goes completely haywire.
Okay, all right. I appreciate it. Thank you, Rich. I don't, I don't know that we, the Anna, I guess, as to whether we need to take any action on that or if we want to, what we.
People have to postpone it again because it was postponed to today.
This is, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, I move we postpone it till the 21st.
Councilman Noack, second.
Okay, and before we vote, um, I, I guess I'll just throw this out there. I, I think, I think most people know and the media is probably aware that, that the, the farmers market has been and will remain, available to use the, the, um, Michigan warming shelter until we get this figured out. So, so just anyone that's questioning as to whether they're going to be there. As far as I know, uh, they will continue to operate out of the farmers market in the last few weeks. Anna, when you're ready.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noack?
Councilman Noack, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, under unfinished business is the Intergovernmental Agreement for Fire Department Organization. Chief Bush is presenting for that.
Hello, mayor, council. Good evening. In late June, Alpena Township reached out to ask how we might be able to work together in the provision of fire services. A public meeting was held November 10th at the Aplex where both city council and township board heard public input on the concepts discussed. On November 23rd, Alpena Township trustees shared their concerns with the initial draft agreement and heard public input from a number of citizens. The majority of concerns related to the potential of extended response times and staffing of township fire stations. The board voted to share these concerns with the city and see whether we would be able and willing to address them. We heard these concerns and worked with leadership to develop a new plan, a summary of which was delivered to council and the public on Friday via the city website. The draft two plan has been developed in concept, but still needs a bit more work before it would be ready to present to the township, if that is council's will. Nothing has been or will be done without the concurrence of the applicable elected officials. It is important to note that as part of our agreement with Alpena County, city firefighters respond to every medical emergency in Alpena County, including Alpena Township and transport all emergency patients. This has been in place for 40 years and would not be affected by any plan we implement for greater collaboration. Over 90% of the emergency runs handled by either the Alpena Township or city fire departments are medical in nature. So we're really discussing a small percentage of the emergencies in the township. Additionally, the paid-on-call firefighters that were so critical to the current township fire department would be maintained and enhanced under the proposed plan. The only part that is left is replacing one firefighter EMT at each station with two firefighter paramedics that can provide EMS or, and/or fire response as needed for those few fire-related calls. Duplication of resources and efforts like specialized fire equipment, ladder trick, truck, and disciplines, confined space, tech rescue, those kinds of things could be reduced or curtailed, saving dollars for both communities. Draft two includes the following concepts. We look to add three additional, not the three existing open positions that we talked about last time, but three additional positions to city fire, increasing shift size to 10 personnel per shift with a nine-person daily minimum. Increase the township contribution accordingly, but the final amount would have to be negotiated. Assign a two-person ALS ambulance at the township north station and at the south station. Both stations are less than a mile from the city limits and could serve that portion of the city even more effectively than headquarters. Dispatch the closest unit to all calls regardless of city township borders. And it's very important to note that, that we would maintain and build our paid-on-call component and continue paid-on-call response from home to all township and some city emergencies. Paid-on calls would be assigned EMS kits and respond directly to the scene throughout the community, increasing their effectiveness and proximity response. Using this deployment model, there is no increase in city or township response times. In fact, response times may be even shorter to areas of both communities and to the county areas beyond them. More importantly, time to advance life support is reduced, making the response more effective. Mutual aid agreements were brought up in the public comment and are in effect with all communities regionally through the Thunder Bay Area Firefighters Association and are not impacted by any possible merger. The city is also implementing the Michigan Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, MABUS, connecting us with specialized mutual aid resources statewide. It should be noted that mutual aid requires reciprocity. One must be able to reciprocate in order to request mutual aid. If this were to go through and there was, one party was unable to respond in recipro- reciprocity, the first party would not be helped in their agreement. Our city training officer, Deputy Chief Rob, Rob Edmonds, will conduct fire and EMS training for all full-time and paid-on-call personnel, including evening training for paid-on-call members, to improve their abilities and effectiveness in blended responses. Rob is both a fire, uh, fire service instructor and an EMS instructor coordinator at the paramedic level. So he's able to provide all of that training, although we have several instructors in each, uh, each discipline. An agreement with IFF Local 623 allows for hiring EMTs, providing them paramedic education, and establishing a new pay scale for non-paramedic firefighters. An agreement with North Central Michigan College will enable us to provide paramedic training onsite at the public safety facility. And it's that, uh, educational component that will allow us to use EMTs effectively, uh, while they're training to, to train up to higher levels. There is no agreement with either union local with regard to the proposed merger. However, bargaining with the township local is in progress. Here's an important point. Two township fire employees have come forward and applied for positions with city fire, regardless of whether this proposal moves forward or not. Conditional offers of employment have been extended and accepted, and pre-employment screening is in progress. The city union agreement does not preclude such an agreement if adopted. Under a revised proposal, we would be able to address most or all concerns and completely mitigate the response time issue without reducing service to city residents. The concept is simply to erase the borders and handle the entire community as one, moving people and equipment around as needed. Both municipalities can receive enhancements in service by joining forces and sharing resources. Alpena Township also gains the ability to do so while operating within its fire millage by leveraging economies of scale. I believe the action that is needed tonight, this is staff needs guidance as to whether we should stop at this point or leave the township to figure out their fire department on their own or continue to develop a joint response. The decision is in your hands and we look for your guidance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief. I guess I will start, um, by saying that, um, that I, I agree with the chief's last point that at this point, um, at the very least, we should, um, we should, uh, to move to give him, him and our city manager some direction as to where to go with this. We were all at the meeting on November 10th and heard the, heard the concerns of the residents that were there, um, and, uh, and then subsequently some, some even follow-up, uh, correspondence with some concerns. Again, this was, um, this was brought to us by the, by the township and we were asked to, uh, to propose an agreement, uh, that would work for them. And so, you know, I think that, that the chief and, and the township, uh, representatives have done a really commendable job on, on not only proposing something, but, uh, but then. Really commendable job on, on not only proposing something, but uh but then. You know, hearing the con- the concerns with the residents and, and making adjustments. On a, I, I would, I would like to see uh us continue to work with the township to see if we can um propose something that works for them. And their. And their um residents. So that's, that's where I would go. Uh I wanna kinda con- I'd like to see this continue. Uh until we get, until we either get to a spot where, where something is proposed that's, that everyone agrees with or. We, or we don't. But I don't think that we should stop at this point. So um. I can kinda, I can go around uh the horn for comments if you'd like, or, or someone would like to, you know, that doesn't have any comments and would like to. Um to uh propose a motion to, to, to direct staff. Either way, I'll, I'll start with Cindy.
Um first of all, I'd like to thank Chief Forbush for his work on this um proposal. Um I know it's done with the best of intentions and we were asked to help and um everything that's been done to this point. Um certainly um leads to that. Um that being said, um our motion. When we left the last meeting was on the proposal that was on the table, that we would vote on it. So in my opinion. I don't think it's gonna be the proposal that we vote on. Um in fact, um I don't think. From everything that I've read and the feedback I've gotten from people um and the meeting that we attended. I'm not sure that the township residents or some city residents are ready for this to happen. For many reasons. Um and I can tell you from the latest article in the paper. Um they met with Chief Robbins and they've, and, and according to that article is. They're waiting for us to decide something, but they're trying to work toward an agreement. Um what I see from the city, from the city's perspective, if is, if there is an agreement and I don't. I don't agree with the merger at this point. Um but if there is an agreement, I see it more of an agreement on um. Coming up with an agreement that helps them um with their department. Um maybe, a- and I'm not saying they lack anything. I'm not saying they're lacking anything and I'm not sure. They think they're lacking anything, but if there's a way that we can help them um to build their department. Or do what we can do s- sort of, and not necessarily the same as we did with Preskeel. But um something more like, like an agreement like that rather than, than a merge. Um I don't think at this particular point that the merge is good for the township because I don't think they want it. And frankly, I don't think it's good for the city. Um it's difficult to go from um, in my opinion. Um taking care of a, a city of ten thousand to taking care of uh. An area of thirty thousand people. Um and if it breaks, we own it. Um I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that. And with that, I'll leave it, leave it there.
Okay, I just, I just wanna make one clarification that, that the, that the, I don't know what the combined. Um the combined residency is of both, but I don't, I don't think it's thirty thousand. Um because the entire county is thirty-five thousand. Um I, I don't, I don't, it's, I'm not really sure, but I think that. I think the township has the same amount of people as we do, so it would probably be more like doubling it, but um just wanted to clarify that really quick.
Thank you.
Unless you know for sure. What that number is, but I, I don't think it's thirty, but um. Next, we would move to Mike Noak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think uh, you know, it shouldn't be a shock to anyone uh where I stand on this because I, I raised concerns. In uh when we were getting together and, and putting together a proposal to help Preskeel, but. I wanted to help Preskeel because it's basically our end in mind was to build a fire department that they could stand on their own. In uh two thousand thirteen, consolidation was on the community's mind. Uh part of our community here wanted to understand where we stood as council people who were running. And I came out opposed to it, uh stating at that time that we're simply better together. We have seen examples of that throughout the years where basically Alpena Township with their firemen, their equipment have come in and helped us. And we have helped them with fires and the cooperation was something that I've always uh pushed for. If you look at, you know, um like uh Mayor Pro Tem Johnson was stating, there may be areas that we can help them improve. But I am not in favor at all of moving forward with this agreement. And there's a lot of different reasons um that I have. There's a bunch of what ifs with this. Uh two biggest being that neither uh citizens from the city who have approached me on this are in favor of this at all. Uh not so much for the amount of person or people that are in the communities, but the amount of square miles that basically were causing. Our firemen to cover. The other areas there is there so many things that we don't know what we don't know yet. Um there's just items on here that we can, we can look at and, and, and look at in theory, but we, we don't know for sure. Um I don't like, and I know council's aware of this, I don't like the way that this came to us. You know, I thought that uh, I know, and I will state this publicly, if it was on the other end. Uh it would be us going to our chief first and then to the men and women who work for us. And then out to our citizens before we'd approach anybody else on a, on an agreement. That's the way we've operated in the past and that's the way I hope this council continues to operate. And finally, my last point is, is that the men and women, women of our union are asking us to reject this. And I've always supported them and I will continue to do so. So I'm asking council to stop with any more negotiations on that. But uh a- and let's not move forward with this in any way, shape or form. But I do publicly also wanna thank Bill Forbush for reviewing this. I appreciate your time spent on this, sir. And you know, I have the utmost greatest respect for you. So I, I thank you for that, but I think that uh on our end that we can just uh, uh stop right here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And um Amber, please, your thoughts?
Yes, well, I want, I'll start with a question either for the mayor or possibly for Chief Forbush. During that, the public meeting on the tenth. As the public asked questions, um there were, it was indicated that questions would be written down. And that frequently asked questions would be answered somewhere to the public um. In some form, that was kind of the impression I got because we weren't gonna take time during the meeting and some of the questions were things that maybe we didn't have answers for. Whether it was a question to the city or the township right at the time. Has that been done in any form? Yeah?
Yes, the uh, the responses that we would have put in frequently asked questions, we instead used. In developing the revised plan. It became very clear on November tenth that the exist, the first version of the plan. Had two major shortback, uh shortfalls, that being uh response time or the fear of an increased response time. Uh and whether or not stations are manned. So rather than post-inaccurate or outdated information, this has been floating around ever since. Uh we instead opted to revise the plan to address the concerns. Uh we've monitored the uh. Social media and other outlets, the citizen uh concerns and, and input. We've listened to all of those comments and then we've adapted the plan so that it addresses those concerns. We thought that was better than just answering the outdated questions from that point. But thank you, I'm glad you brought that up. Uh I do have two of my union officers here with me now and I'd like to, to clarify and please correct me if I'm wrong. The union made a Facebook post asking council not to accept version one of the plan. Within a day or two of that November tenth meeting. That is not a position against the entire project. It's a position against that version of the plan as it was currently written. Uh I'd like to turn the camera toward our, our executive board members and indicate whether they have an objection to this version at this time.
Good evening, Brett Miller. Uh that is a correct statement from the chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that response. And I, I do notice that um a couple of the main concerns that were asked were addressed in this revised plan. Um I would still hope that, well, if there's any other things on the seaside or. And township, they had a lot of questions for the township about other things. I would, I would hope that. Um questions are answered at least to the citizens that have been asking them, because I, I don't know that I've seen those. Well, the questions that were asked other than response times. Um more and more about off maybe their budget, that's, that's for them to answer, but I appreciate um your work on this, Chief Forbush. And um your answer. Um beyond that, I want to say that I don't see that there's necessarily. A great benefit to the citizens of, of the city from this agreement and there are a lot unknowns and questions. About how it could play out. I could see there could be some possible reduced response times, you know, ideally if everything plays out well. Um but I also just have some concerns at the very base level of accepting funds and as part of a contract. I'm in good conscience, I don't know if I could enter a contract as a municipality and accept funds that just two years ago were specifically earmarked. For the township fire department in the miller vote. Um there, I researched more of this, obviously recently since I'm, I'm township president. I didn't follow it in twenty eighteen at the time. You know, but in the summer, they approved a one and a half. Um mill, it was up uh half a percent or a point five mills more than before cooperations. And then again, later that year, they approved another point six five mills specifically for equipment for their township fire department. And that was, I guess, in two, two years ago. Um the first one was for ten years, the second one for five years. Um so I think the, the voters of, I don't represent the township, but for the city, but at the same time, I don't know that I would feel in good conscience. That it makes sense to take the money voted on by those voters um in a contract for a department that they voted to support. So those are my thoughts on it.
Hey, uh thank you. And Eddie Mitchell?
Yes, uh I am not in favor of the agreement and I, I kinda have a problem of how the township came about. It's like this. Um they, they were having problems with budget shortfalls, how much was a shortfall? Was the shortfall figured into the military request? All this kinda stuff. Um. They didn't talk to their fire department, they didn't talk to their uh citizens to determine whether they would support suction action. And, and those are some very important uh factors that I think that should have been taken care of. Um. I, I, reading the newspaper articles, I got the feeling that, that uh. We were being thrown under the bus, if you will. We were uh being uh the, made doubt to be the bad people in this situation. Um but uh the, really the big thing to me comes down to this is the factor that. They stated in the, let's see, December third article of the Alpena News, the township uh. Uh they said the general fund subsidized its fire department to the tune of three hundred fifty thousand dollars last year. Despite property taxes meant to fund firefighting. So if that's, if they're looking at, say, five hundred thousand dollars in the millage to raise there. And an additional three hundred fifty thousand dollars, that's eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that couldn't uh take care of that. Um. Really, the big thing comes down to it is, is if we did this and the way the citizens of the township feel. The next time the village increase comes, or, or renewal comes up, they're more likely not gonna vote for it. So then where does that leave the agreement? Um and, and if we're getting a, a good portion of their firefighters and the agreement doesn't hold up. And we can't do the agreement, then where is their fire department at? You know, so um I, I don't think personally that the township themselves did their due diligence. In, in the research portions and all this stuff before coming to us. I do believe that they should have talked to Chief Robbins. Their firefighters, their union and their citizens before coming to the township. That's just flat and simple. I really, I think that the Chief Forbush did an outstanding job in putting this together. He's did a lot of time in it. He did a lot of research in it and, and it makes a lot of sense. I just. I can't in good conscience support it right now. So that's where I am.
Mayor, may I comment?
Uh yes, sir.
Um couple of questions came up from the council members and I always wanna provide council members with, with feedback when they have questions. Um true, the millage did support the fire depart, the township fire department, but what exactly is the township fire department is up for uh. Dispute, if you will. Uh Bill Pfeifer even said that, that the township fire department is whoever's providing fire services in the township at the time. The newspaper articles are certainly not any indication of, of the facts and I. I digress, but please don't count on the, the newspaper to tell you exactly what's going on. We will give you the straight information anytime you ask for it. But it's generally not accurate there. The citizens in the township representing one point four percent of the population. Have an extremely vocal minority. Most citizens have not weighed on, weighed in on this issue at all. So I don't think that you could, in all conscience, at this point, say that the city or township residents have actually uh weighed in. As you saw from the overwhelming presence in public comment tonight. Chief Robbins' plan was to increase their budget and reduce the amount of service they provide. I think that's exactly what we're trying to get away from. We're trying to provide more service for less money and we've proved that we can in forty years of ambulance contracts serving the exact same area. Um but with all of that said, you are the elected officials, I am the staff member, I defer to your wisdom. I just wanna have, make sure that you have all of the information. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank, thank you, Chief. Um you touched on several points that I was, that I was going to make and. Um the council can take it for what it's worth, but uh again, I, and I'll just reiterate that, that the meeting, the meeting was great input. The meeting on the tenth, we, we've got, we got some very useful input. Um but I, I would like to, to, to do the same, to say the same, that, that the, the negativity. Um I think you're considering ten thousand people in the township and ten thousand people in the city. Um right around those numbers. Uh I really don't think that, that we've got, gotten a negative, a, a, a large enough negative. Attitude towards this plan. Um I know, I will echo as well that I would really. Really caution anyone on taking, you know, and this isn't a direct slam uh towards, towards the media, so to speak, but if you want. If you want um information, if you need information that's gonna help you with, with this. Um based on, you know, numbers and, and comments that people are making uh from the township board. And, and their budget and things, I would go, uh urge you to go directly to the source rather than um the media, the newspaper. Um because you're just kind of getting a snippet of, of what they were talking about. Uh at the time and may have, some comments might be taken out of context. Um what I've done is, is I've, I've really kind of separated myself from issues that are the township's issues. Uh so to speak, as to whether they went through their chief a- as we would have or not. That, that's. I, I have absolutely no idea what the relationship is between, between their, their elected officials and their staff. Um known at this point, is it really, is it really an issue with me? The, the issue is, is collaborating. And consolidating with them um a good idea. Uh is it gonna, is it a good idea for, for the overall community? Um and I'll be the one, I guess, that, that, that's on this board that says that I absolutely, absolutely think that it is. We're talking about saving um a lot of dollars. We're talking about being more efficient. We're talking about being. Um uh better trained throughout the entire community. And when I look at Chief Forbush's new plan. Um I know that it's not refined and it's not complete and ready for agreement, uh of what he's, what he's come up with, with. The township, um you know, with Nathan Skibby, I, I think it's just, I think it's great for the community. Better response time, better training. Um their stations aren't that far from ours um right now. So, you know, really, in my mind, we're just talking about um a, a, an established line that's that. A lot of our residents don't even know uh where that line is as far as city to township. So um. You know, we're not, we're not here to, to vote on the, on the plan itself. Uh I know Cindy touched on that. But, but what we agreed to do is to postpone it until both parties. Um, but, but what we agreed to do is to postpone it until parties were, were. Ready and, and in my opinion, we're just, we're continuing to make revisions to that original plan. Um, I don't think at, at any point, um, we're, we're subject to have to vote on that and on an ad initial. Plan to either move forward or not to. Um, again, what I would like to do tonight is to, is to make sure that, that we've directed our chief and city manager. Uh, in the right direction on this, it sounds like it might be somewhat mixed, um, perhaps not. I, I wanna, I wanna continue, um, I wanna, I want the chief and Nathan to continue. And, and the boards to continue this to see, to see where it can go. And that's just, that's where I stand, that I, I think that it's workable. I think that, oh, the vast majority of the concerns and questions that were brought up at, at the meetings are, are being answered. Um, and in the end might be, but I'd like to continue. That's just my, that's just my perspective. So. You know, I, I don't know where, if anyone has any follow up, uh, comments, um, but. I think, I think most of the concerns on both residents have been. Um, well, what I mean by is as the city and the township have been answered or are very close to being answered, so. And then, like I said, if somebody would like to chime in and make a, a follow up comment, or if someone would like to at least. Uh, make a motion so we can vote on it and, and the chief will know where is that.
Well, and you know, I think council understood where I'm at, you know, as far as I go and, and uh, Mayor Proton, Tim Johnson, I didn't mean to step over you. If I did, I apologize, but uh, I think to some of the points there is like, you know, I don't want to downplay the input. Or the uh, input that I've been getting from the citizens or from the township people that are opposed to this, that say that maybe it's a local minority. It's like, you know, I think these people understand the issue, I think they know what they want, and I think that, you know, if it's. Uh, thirteen hundred members or whatever that are, are coming forward and saying they're opposed to this, that's a pretty good percentage of the. Of the township people out there, if we were to poll on those numbers, I think that would be a different state and I'm just, you know, putting that out there. Um, I, you know, I, I stated my point and I'm going to stand by that, that I don't see this as being anything that could improve the lives of the citizens of. The city of Alpina who we are charged with, and I believe that all local government is established for public safety. That is a responsibility that we take as a council and that the township board should take as a, as, as the township trustee should take as a township board. That is their primary responsibility. Um, I just think there's too many what ifs within this agreement. There's too many unknowns and I, for one, am not willing to, uh, you know, enter into an agreement like this. Uh, based on those factors alone, I have my other concerns on how it was brought to us, uh, to Danny Mitchell's point. Um, speaks to character a little bit for me, but so I'm opposed to it, I want it to stop as of right now and. If we need to put a, an, a motion that just says that we're gonna stop uh negotiating or moving forward with this, I'm happy to make that motion.
Add Mitchell's support.
Okay, so re, re, reiterate and, and word your, your motion uh carefully a- as to direction for spam.
Councilman Noak, I move that we discontinue negotiation of the intergovernmental fire agreement with the Alpina Township.
And Danny, that, that wording is what you've supported?
Yes, it is.
Okay, with that said, I think we've all made our comments, if anybody else has any, any follow up, I'll ask for before we. Before we vote, anybody have any questions or issues?
Um, I just would like to clarify, so the motion is to um, stop. Um, the merge, the merger, but is, am I correct on that?
That was my intent, Mayor Protem.
Okay, so. That being said, I agree with that, but I'm not sure I agree with. Um, not trying to find a way to collaborate with the township to. Help in any needs that they have if they see that necessary. Six, I, I don't, I, I agree with no merger, but I just think if there's a way um to help the township. Do whatever they need to do to build their department however they need it. Um, I'm not opposed to that sort of collaboration. But, um, that being said, I agree with Mike's motion if it is to stop the merger.
I would say that we would um pass this particular motion on this merger and then maybe we can make a second motion. Uh, Mayor Protem that would ask them to pursue cooperation, uh, and maybe look at some shared. Um, things that we can maybe help them with. I mean, I don't know, that would be a separate motion, I would turn to the city attorney for direction in that.
I have my. Yeah, I don't know if, uh, I don't know if we need the attorney to, to weigh in, but uh, he, he can at any point, obviously. Um, at, at this point, um, I would. Perhaps refer to Chief Forbus on, on his thoughts on that because he's the closest to this. Um, the, the whole situation here, um, and, and again, uh, uh, you know, I'm gonna. I'll say that I'm, that I'm disappointed, I, I get it, I get, I get Mike Noak's um. Stance on, on not, on not consolidating, um, and, and his opinion as to, as to. What municipalities are governed to do, um, but, but I just, I, I guess I, I take a. I'm a little bit, I'll, I'll state that I'm a little bit unnerved that, 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 that anyone's. That anyone's opinion would have anything to do with how the township conducted themselves and what their character is and whether they. You know, how, how they spoke with before they came to us and things like that, that's. Um, those are personal opinions and that's fine, I, I may or may not have issues with those as well, but at the same time, that's really not. In my opinion, relevant as to whether we consolidate our services or not, so. Um, so I, i- i- if, if you're against consolidating services, um, altogether, then. Um, that probably would have been a, a good thing to vocalize, maybe a little bit louder, um, several months ago, but B. What we're able to, to do for them will be up to them to ask us. They asked us to come up with a plan to consolidate and if, if they want to turn around, if, if we're gonna, if we vote to stop. To stop that this evening and then what we're basically doing, in my opinion, Chief can, Chief can chime in is. We, they would, they would maybe turn around and ask us if we would be willing to do this, that, or the other thing. But uh, if they do that and they, and, and the chief comes back, you know, with that. Uh, we, we want to, we want to make sure that we're not wasting. Um, several months of, of his time and effort for him to get to a day like today. Where, where he's just completely shut down, I, I think it's, I think it's really, um. We've been doing this for a long time and everybody on council has been well aware that we've been doing this, so, so if he comes. Comes back to us with some other plan, I, I, I think, I think I would like to hear the opinions like this, um, maybe sooner than later, I guess, so. Uh, let's, let's vote on the initial motion, uh, unless Chief has some, you know, s- something he wants any input before then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity, uh, I, I'd like to emphasize once again that this was requested. By the township's elected officials, that's where it all started. And elected officials and representative government are elected to represent their constituents, so they did presumably. Uh, act in the best interest of their community and, and personally, I. In terms of ethics and values, I am certain that what we have worked to create is a superior service to what they had. Before we started and vastly superior to what they will have with their current staffing problems. So we're trying to help, we stand ready to help, we were not the bad guy in this whole thing. And it's really very disheartening to have, uh, to have social media stuff blow up a program, it's just a shame. But, uh, but I appreciate your support, uh, we've, we've done what we can and it's up to you.
All right, with that said, we will uh proceed, Anna, when you're ready.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I have the motion correct. Um, the way that it was stated is that it was moved by council member Noak to discontinue discussion of the IG agreement with Alpina Township. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so when I actually put this in the minutes, I'm just gonna add that, um, it's an intergovernmental agreement for fire department. Organizational and response service, just so that, um, there's more detail in the minutes. Okay?
I understand, that's, that'd be funny, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, Councilman Noak.
Yes.
Mayor Walagora.
No.
Councilwoman Hess.
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that concludes that portion of the.
Everyone?
Item, correct? I know there was a little bit of discussion as to another motion to. Uh, for direction with the fire chief, but I think he gets it and then we'll kind of see, just kind of see where this leads. Uh, when he comes back. To new business, uh, this is the first one is A is the Public Works Service Center Mechanical Maintenance. Rich Solinger?
Yes, and uh, you'll have to excuse me if my video and audio has changed, I had to switch over to my phone, I was having some problems with my. Audio on the computer, so we'll try this route. Um, the contract between the city of Alpina and Lake Shore Plumbing and Heating and Cooling. Uh, is set to expire on December thirty first of twenty twenty. This contract allows for mechanical inspection and quarterly maintenance services at the Public Works Service Center for a five-year term. Bid documents were sent out on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty to six vendors, as well as posted on the city's website. No bids were received for the bid opening on November tenth. The current contractor, Lake Shore Plumbing and Heating and Cooling, installed the original equipment when the Public Works Service Center was built. And has been performing the quarterly inspection, maintenance services on the building for the last fifteen years. The bid for these contracted services got overlooked by Lake Shore, but once contacted, a bid was submitted within hours. The bid received is attached for review with a total cost per year, twenty one, two thousand twenty one through two thousand twenty five. Being one thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars. The last contract, contract which covered the period from two thousand sixteen to two twenty twenty. Total cost per year, uh, was one, one thousand nine hundred and thirty seven dollars. Lake Shore has requested a slight increase of fifty eight dollars, two point nine nine percent a year for the years twenty one through twenty five. It's my recommendation the city engineer at the city council approve the mechanical maintenance contract. For the Public Works Service Center with Lake Shore Plumbing and Heating and Cooling for the AS bid rates.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Noak, I've got a couple of questions.
Certainly.
Uh, Rich, a couple of things that I'm, I'm concerned, did we, did we uh, reach out to uh, any of the other people on that bid list at all? When we, we did not get any bids?
No, because typically, um, Lake Shore has been the only one that has bid it, uh, the last two times that it was bid.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna, I was gonna ask that question because I went through and looked at some old ones and they were the only bidder that I could find and I wanted to be sure that was a fact.
Yeah, they, they were, they, uh, they have been the only bidder, I said, for at least the last two times that we have bid this out.
Okay, all right, uh, that's all the questions I have, sir.
All right, thank you, thank you, Rich, um, I don't have any question or comments, anybody else have any questions, Rich? Not, uh, entertain a motion to accept that.
Uh, Councilman Noak, I move we approve the mechanical maintenance contract for the Public Works Service Center with Lake Shore Plumbing and Heating.
Mayor Protem Johnson, second.
Sorry, Danny, was that me?
Yes.
Uh, I?
Councilwoman Hess.
Hess, yes.
And Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
And Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Rich, uh, next is the. Um, audible pedestrian signal Chisholm Street and Third Avenue.
Yes, uh, the Michigan Department of Transportation received a request to install an audible pedestrian signal at the intersection of Chisholm Street. And Third Avenue and the email I received from Garrett Daw, M dot T S C, Alpina T S C managers below. And the, the main gist of it was, um, if the city supported this, uh, we would need to address three things. Uh, one, confirmation that city has worked with any landowner, business owners. That may be affected by the audible features and the conclusion is that the location is suitable in terms of noise level and neighborhood acceptance. Two, if the devices are new to the municipality, which I believe they would be. Confirmation should be provided that a mobility specialist has concurred that the location is suitable in terms of safety. And three, a demonstrated need typically documented by the user request. Um. Since I received this request, I've also received the following emails regarding installation of the signal which support item number three in Garrett Daw's. Uh, email and I'm not going to read the, the, uh, the three letters. Um, but, uh, to continue on, I also received the attached letter from Erica Urkey. A certified orientation and mobility specialist supporting leader dog clients. She has documented the need for an audible signal at this location, which is requirement from M dot. This meets requirement number two from Garrett Daw's email of October nineteenth. The city has also enlisted the assistance of Ann Gentry to meet with, with the adjoining property owners around the Chisholm Street, Third Avenue intersection. To determine that there are no issues with this property owner in installing an audible pedestrian signal. This would meet, meet requirement number one in Garrett Daw's email of October nineteen. Ann has met or talked with the adjoining property owners who have expressed their approval of the installation with no concerns noted. Ann, representing the DDA, has also included her support in the attached letter. Um, one thing I should point out, this is at no cost to the city. Uh, because this is a, a, a service that M dot uh provides. They will be uh, providing one hundred percent of the cost associated with the installation of this pedestrian signal. So it is my recommendation to city engineer that city council endorse and recommend this project to M dot.
Okay, uh, thanks, Rich, and for all the legwork you did on this, um, I'm certainly not opposed to it, I think it's a great idea and it seems. Like, I, I do have one question, uh, not recalling ever seeing one of these, certainly not anywhere local, is to. Um, can you give me an idea of just how loud this is?
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna be very honest with you, Mayor, I, I can't answer that. Um, I know, uh, probably fifteen years ago, back when the. Uh, library for the blind was over on Chisholm Street, city manager at that time and I went over and met with that group about. Uh, possible audible pedestrian signal installations. Um, but it never went any further at that point in time, so we did do it.
Good, all right, and it was actually just a question out of curiosity, um, so if, if passed, I guess we'll all find out.
I'm happy to speak on it if you'd like, they're super common, um, in like larger cities, so I would say they're probably. Louder than a normal person speaking, but definitely quieter than a yell.
Okay.
I, for the record, that was, that was our city planner.
Hello, sorry.
All right, um, so unless someone's got some other, any other questions, um, entertain a motion for Rich.
Um, Councilman Noak, I move we approve, endorse and recommend, uh, the audible pedestrian, uh, crossing signal at Chisholm and Third to the MBO.
Mayor Protem Johnson, second.
Yeah, when you're ready, Anna.
Councilwoman Hess? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Noak, yes.
And Mayor Walagora?
Uh, Mayor, hi.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, Rich. Next up is the water recycling plant, PVP pump contract modification two.
Yep, and before I start, I'd like to thank Andrea for jumping in there and answering that question for me. Just another good, good reason why we have such an asset with her.
Very good.
And in, in January 2020, the city received, uh, bids and awarded contracts for the water recycling plant, PVP pump project. This project involved the replacement of the first of four piston pumps utilized by the plant in the treatment process. And an upgrade to the electrical panel for this pump and a significant portion of the plant. Bid documents were sent to various firms, as well as posted on the city's website with one bid received from Meridian Contracting in the amount of $39,300 for the installation of the pump. Subsequently, a contract modification was executed to upgrade the electrical panel in the amount of 17,850. Through the process of completing this budget year's projects with the water recycling plant personnel. Plan operator Bob Riznowski indicated the three remaining pumps are in deficient condition and are working on borrowed time. After a, a review of this year's budget, it was discussed, um, the density baffles. Um, final clarifier could be delayed as they are not necessary, but would eventually increase the efficiency of the treatment plant. However, a failure of one of the existing pumps would be catastrophic and shut down treatment until the pump could be fixed. For this reason, we are requesting reallocation of the baffles budget to the replacement of the three remaining pumps. The baffles will be included once again in the CIP process till such a time as funding is available for the project to be completed. The city reached out to Todd Britton of Meridian Contracting about extending his existing contract for installing the three remaining pumps, not valves. Um, we agreed to complete the remaining pumps for this original price of 39,300 each for a total contract modification of 117,900. The city originally had $95,000 in the current budget for the pump replacement project. And to date have spent 57,150 to replace the first pump and upgrade the electrical panel. This leaves a balance of 37,850. With a $90,000 budget for the density baffles, a total of 127,850 dollars is available to complete this work. With the support of the water treatment plant personnel, it is my recommendation to city engineer to reallocate the density baffles budget to the water recycling plant, PVP pump project. And to execute a contract modification with Meridian Contracting for the completion of the work totaling 117,900. And attached are emails, uh, supporting those.
Couple of questions, Mr.
Um, Mayor, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, um, I just have one, a quick one, and then I'll turn it over to you, Mike.
Yep, thanks, sir.
The, um, uh, the initial, the initial pump that we had, um, replaced, um, uh, required, uh, an additional electrical panel, um, adding, uh, 17,850,000, 17,850 dollar cost. Um, I'm, I'm assuming by your letter here and the amounts that you are, that you've got in here, that that's not gonna be the case on these three remaining pumps. He mentioned some, maybe some fittings and things, but no, but I didn't see any mention of, of an electrical panel.
No, that electrical panel upgrade handled, uh, involved the, the, um, pay, or the controls for these other four, three pumps. So, um, that electrical panel upgrade covered everything that would be needed for these upgrades.
Okay, very good, uh, that was my only question, uh, Mike, you had some, uh, questions as well?
Yeah, um, Rich, a couple of the things that, uh, I had in there, I just, it's kind of a similar question. I believe when we were looking at installs of this particular equipment within that water plant, uh, Dever was the only bidder that we had on the original one, if I'm not mistaken, or is that, am I thinking differently?
I think, uh, I think Meridian was the only one that bid on it.
Okay, and my other question that is usually within this industry, it's common for an economy of scale, if you're buying one versus buying three. Usually the cost of the pumps would, would be a much better price, is that something that we're, we're gonna happen, or is that just not something that we were able to pursue on this?
No, uh, this is just for the installation of the pumps, uh, we actually already have the pumps on hand, we, we ended up buying all four of them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, and that's my other question with, with them, it's, it's $39,000 each and usually within that car, or 39, three, usually within that cost is bringing in, uh, your equipment to be able to install and so on. And I was just wondering, you know, they bid out the other three for the same price, and I was just wondering, usually there's somewhat of an economy of scale there if they're getting additional work on that end. And we're not getting any kind of a discount on that at all that I see.
No, it, it's, most of it is, is manual labor and, and, uh, tearing the old pump out. And then pouring a new base for the pump and then resetting it, so it, it's not really a place where you can get the equipment in there, it's all mostly manual labor.
All right, thank you, sir.
Rich, this is Cindy, I have just one question and maybe you can explain it to everybody, exactly what does a density baffle do?
Basically what it does, it, it sits in the flow channels and it slows down the flow so that, um, the solids out of the waste treatment stream will settle faster.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more question too, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Rich, is there a plan going forward, uh, I'm assuming we're not doing the piston pumps anymore, there's a new technology that you're using with these. Is there a, a plan that we have where it would be better off if we replace these on a rotating basis versus all at once?
That, that, actually, that's part of the new, uh, asset management, and management program that, uh, MDEQ is, is requiring of us. We will be going through putting all of the, all of the individual components, everything into a management plan. So that we can start targeting replacement of these, um, on a more scheduled basis.
And do we have like, uh, uh, manufacturers expect it, life expectancy on, on these type of pumps?
Yeah, I, I don't know what it, what it is for these new pumps right off the top of the head, but right off the top of my head, but those old pumps are probably 1950s vintage.
Okay, all right, so we've gotten our dollars worth, thank you very much.
Yes, okay.
Rich, this is Ann, I have a question for you.
You're not allowed to ask questions.
We're not actually, um, going to have to move any dollars from, um, any general ledger account number to another one, are we? Is it, is it, this project gonna be paid out of the same one?
It'll be paid out of the same budget, but since we're, we're transferring the money allocated for one project to another, we wanted to bring it before council. And, um, get the authorization to modify the contract.
Okay, just want to make sure we're not actually doing a budget amendment.
No, there's no budget amendment.
Gotcha, thank you.
Very good, um, any other questions for, for Rich or perhaps Anna? If, now I'll entertain a motion to, execute that contract, I guess, I guess that's the wording.
I move we execute the contract modification with Meridian Contract in the amount of 117,900 for pumping soul.
Mayor Protem Johnson, second.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
And Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, hi.
And Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, thank you, Rich. Uh, next up is the Neighborhood Enhancement Program Grant, Andrea Kears is here.
Hello. So, I will start, um, by saying that this grant does not require a match from the city. Um, it is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, it's their Neighborhood Enhancement, uh, Program Section. So they are providing up to $2 million in MISTHA funding statewide for activities tied directly to the stabilization and enhancement of Michigan's rural communities and urban neighborhoods. So the grant funds can be divided between three components. Component A includes eligible exterior activities for single-family homes. And that is required to make up a minimum of 50% of the grant funds that are being requested. Um, component B is allocated for enhancements to public amenities. And that can make up a maximum of 50% of the requested funds. And then lastly, component C is for interior rehabilitation of single-family homes, that's a max of 25%. Um, and that's typically just, you know, code violations, so electrical boilers, things like that. Um, so staff is requesting the maximum, which is $75,000. So divided up, that would mean a total of $40,000 or eight $5,000 grants that would be allocated to component A, so exterior upgrades to single-family residential homes. Component B would include $25,000 to be used towards public amenities. And then this leaves $10,000 to be used towards the interior improvements directly related to code violations. So staff is simply requesting, you know, permission from council to move forward with this application. It is due on the 17th of December.
Okay, uh, thank you, Andrea, I, you know, I've got a couple of questions maybe about that grant itself.
Yeah, absolutely.
Certainly not opposed to any grant that doesn't take a match, um. Let's just say, and I, and I apologize if, if I didn't read the entire grant, uh, language.
That's okay.
Boring stuff like that to you, um, but my question is, is, let's just say that we do, um, that we do pursue this grant and we're awarded an amount. How, how do we distribute that? Do we turn around and, and someone in your position, um, solicits, uh, grant applications from residents that have these issues? Or how does, how does it get dispersed?
Yeah, we would request applications from residents to see what the need is. And then they would also be required to provide proof that their income is below 120% median for this area at least. So under around, I think, 42,000, 48,000.
Okay, and that's, yeah, that, as a matter of fact, I think that, that nature was in our consent agenda. Um, if it's the same poverty level as, as we use for tax exemptions. So, so how does that, um, just give me an indication, I guess, of how much, um, not that I'm opposed, um, but just how much, uh, staff time and who, who puts together, will, will, puts together the, the applications that will be going out? Um, is that something that you do, or does the state already have a, a template for that, or?
Yeah, so there are templates already available, um, I likely would go through and make our own, but it shouldn't take me more than an hour or two. And then I would have the application downloadable online, so the NEP has requested that, you know, these funds go out quickly. Um, so that's something that would, you know, easily be able to be created and posted online. Um, you know, once funds were awarded, or even, you know, having the application available for future grants in the event of the funds being awarded, and then it's, the grant application that would be created shouldn't take longer than five to 10 minutes to read. Um, and then, you know, we would probably have a panel of people who would assess those grant applications and then determine, you know, the great who, I would say, which resident has the greatest need for those funds. Um, it is required to be owner-occupied homes, you know, within the city of Alpena.
Okay, and then, and then I guess that just briefly leads me to my, one of my next questions, a, as far as, as applications go, they would be on a, on a more essential lead basis rather than first come, first served, or?
Correct, yes, um, so the interior ones are strictly for, you know, code compliance itself. Um, so, you know, if you don't have a boiler that's working, if you have electrical that's about to burn down your home, things like that. Um, in terms of exterior, you know, that can be for a roof that's about to fall in, or, you know, your siding is, um, you know, maybe making your neighbor is not quite as happy as it should, little things like that, um, you know, there are a few places in this. You know, myself and the, um, county have been looking at, so the, the county's actually applying for the same grant. Um, and it's, it's something that, you know, would be used for the people with the greatest need.
Okay, and as far as the component B, if we were allocated any money for that, then you would just basically, I'm, I'm sure you'd work with staff and the, and the parks committee or something like that.
Yeah, I'm sure Rich has plenty of ideas on where that money could go.
I bet he does. So those, uh, those are my questions, um, I think that's pretty much covered, does anybody else have any other questions they would like to, um, address?
No questions here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right, thanks, um, and you need approval from us to, to, uh, apply for the grant, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion.
I, this, Mayor Protem Johnson, I move that we allow the city to apply for the NEP grant, um, and the maximum amount for $75,000.
Councilman Mitchell, support?
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
And Mayor Protem Johnson?
Um, Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, Andrea, um. And that's all that's on our agenda, I'll just remind people on the virtual world real quick that we will be adjourned to closed session. Um, and when we return, we don't, uh, anticipate, I don't know, will we take any action because it's not on the agenda anyhow. Um, so, but we will come back, uh, to open session to, to, uh, adjourn our regular meeting.
Uh, just a reminder to the council members, please don't leave until after I take the rule, after the motion for this.
Right, thank you.
Hey, Councilman Noak, I move we adjourn to closed session to discuss, uh, water sewer litigation.
Johnson, second.
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Mayor, hi.
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
And Protem Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Mitchell, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, see you soon. Yep, bye, everybody.